Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Candidates Forum. My name is Alan Foles, and I'll be moderating the discussion. I'm joined by a press panel to ask the questions. On my far right is Joy Hosford of Wicked Local. Seated next to Joy is Rich Hosford, B News Director here at BCAT. At this session, we're going to focus on the Board of Selectmen. We have three candidates for two open positions. The positions are three years each. Christopher Hartling has been a member since 2013. Robert Hogan, also an incumbent, has been on the Board since 2010, and I believe he is the current Vice Chair. Nick Priest is a 30-plus-year Burlington resident, and he's a senior copywriter at Cambridge Bio-Marketing and has been a candidate for this position in the past. Welcome, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Before we start, we'll go over the ground rules, tell you how things are going to work. Here's how we'll proceed. Each candidate will open, offering a one-minute opening statement, and we've drawn lots for the order. After that, our press panel will ask questions of each of the candidates, and each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer. We'll alternate between members of the press asking the questions, and we'll rotate through the candidates for first response. Try to keep to the 90 seconds so we can get in as many questions as we can. I'll give you maybe a 15-second warning. Maybe I'll yell at you or something. Okay. Next, each candidate will be allowed to ask one question of each of the other candidates, again with 90 seconds to respond, and it must be answerable by both candidates. Finally, each candidate will offer a two-minute closing statement. Again, we've drawn lots for the order. The closing statement is your opportunity for rebuttals to statements made by other candidates, if you so wish. In the interest of covering as many subjects, again, please keep a close watch on the time, and I'll give you a warning. Okay. If everyone is all set, I believe we are going to begin with Mr. Priest.
Yes. Thank you, Alan. Hello, my fellow neighbors. My name is Nick Priest. I'm a lifelong Burlington resident and a graduate of Burlington High School. I attended Worcester State University and graduated with my Bachelor's in Communications. My father was a police officer here in town for many years, and he and my mother raised me with values that my wife and I are instilling in our children every day: respect, discipline, kindness, honesty, and responsibility. I'm running for the office of Selectmen because I believe I possess a different perspective and the skill set can be used to further the success of our town. I have worked in the marketing industry for over 10 years, specifically with biotech and life sciences companies. Through strategic planning, communication, we educate and drive community engagement. I also have extensive research-driven and legal experience. I have served on Ways and Means at Town Meeting where I have had the opportunity to be involved in many facts of the town. I also have the pleasure of serving on the Fourth of July Committee. I am both humbled and honored to carry the proverbial torch forward as we look for ways to be proactive and develop a clear strategic plan that will serve to benefit us all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Robert Hogan.
Hello, everyone, and I am here to ask for one of your two votes. Many of you know me, and I have been working with or volunteering around town for more than three decades. I've been a member of the Rotary Club of Burlington, which, for most of you know, is a charitable international organization, and we've done some wonderful things around Burlington. I'm also on the Board of Directors of People Helping People. I started out on the Board of Health, spent 11 and 1/2 years there, and then was the Director of Veteran Services for about 18 and 1/2 years and also nine years on the Board of Selectmen. So I'm looking for a fourth term, and I need your help to do this. I think I've been very conservative in the way I've approached my responsibilities to you as far as the budgets and the projects that we've been working on. We've done some great things, I think, in the last couple of years. We've kept the tax rate increases modestly down. We've also contacted MWRA about joining them when we had a water problem, and the Governor just recently signed that off. So we are going to be talking about an awful lot of things, and I'm asking for your one vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Christopher Hartling.
Thank you, Alan. My name is Christopher Hartling. I know I don't look it, but I am entering into my 50th year of residency here in Burlington. I live on Colleen Circle with my wife Julie, my son Christian, and my daughter Sophia. I'm currently the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. I have been a member of the Board for six years. Prior to that, I was a member of the Ways and Means Committee, and during that period of time, I was also a member of Town Meeting. The things that I think are important as far as being able to be a leader in town, which really is what this position is about, I think you need history, I think you need perspective, I think you need experience, and I think you need vision. And I have, I firmly believe I have all four of those attributes. So I'm asking for one of your two votes in the upcoming election, and I'm looking very much forward to the next three or four weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. The second part of the program, questions from the press. We're going to begin with Rich Hosford asking the first question from B News, and just as a heads up, Bob will be answering first. Rich?
Thank you. What are your thoughts on the number of liquor licenses in town? Does it need more? Do we have enough already, or perhaps even too many? And how can they be used to further or to drive commercial growth?
I think we have, well, the best answer is, we have some dedicated licenses that probably aren't going to be used. So even though we have liquor licenses listed on the books, there are places that we're trying to get small restaurants, like the downtown area, and we've kind of dedicated some licenses to that area in hopes that we can get some of these small mom-and-pop kind of restaurants. Do we have too many? Yes, in one sense, we do. And the Board has had a discussion with the request that the mall has asked for in adding nine new additional liquor licenses to the Sears and Sears Automotive locations where they are doing renovations and they're going to have new restaurants, new retail stores. I think nine additional licenses will be too much, and for all those restaurants that have already established themselves, whether in the mall or over on Third Ave or in the district, it could hurt them. And I don't support any one of those restaurants in particular, but I would hate to see us do something that would cause some of them to lose the investment in the time and energy and the fellowship by the patrons who use them. So in that sense, we have too many, yes.
Thank you very much. Same question, Chris?
Sure. Rich, I think that's a good question. Personally, I feel like a liquor license, the way we look at it as a Board and the way I look at it as an individual, is it's really, it can be a tool of economic development. We're trying to institute changes in different parts of town. As Bob alluded to, you know, we have some licenses. We asked the state for some licenses specifically for certain areas of town where we'd like to see some economic development, where we don't necessarily see that right now. I don't think we're in trouble in any area of town, but I think as somebody who lives here and eats here and shops here and spends time here, I like the idea of having choices. Personally, I think the market determines whether or not we have too many liquor licenses. So if there are too many choices, certain choices won't be selected, and not that I wish ill on anybody, but those places will no longer operate simply due to the economics of what goes on in town. So in that sense, I don't think we have too many.
Okay. Thank you. And then the same question, Nick?
Yeah. I think right now, no, we don't have too many. I think, could we? Absolutely. I think to Bob and Chris's points about, you know, delegating certain licenses to certain areas in the hopes of bringing revitalization or, you know, economic redevelopment to certain areas is critical in our town. I think, you know, the idea of being able to, you know, be a family, in my case, a family of five, and take my kids out for a meal and have it not cost $500, you know, would be ideal, right? And it's kind of hard to do that with some of the establishments here in town as it stands. But we do. We need to focus where we're putting the licenses, and, you know, I think that as it stands, we have enough, and, you know, there needs to be a really good reason to start adding more.
Great. Thank you very much. Our second question comes from Joy Hosford.
Thank you. The position of Selectmen comes with the benefit of having a background of a career. How do you feel that your career makes you best prepared for the position?
We'll begin with Chris.
Certainly. Truthfully, Joy, I think that's a good point. I think your career does play a role in being a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I think no matter what you do in your current job, there is some sort of an application to what we do now. I am currently an executive with a software company. I manage a group of people. It's a much smaller group of people than the 25,000 that live in Burlington, but really seeing the way people interact in small groups and large groups dynamically, understanding the economics associated with a company and how important the bottom line is and how responsible economic philosophies really play into the success or failure in a business. I believe that it does play, your vocation does play a role in helping you to be better at this job, but I'm not necessarily of the opinion that the level of job that you have really plays into how well you do this Selectmen job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, Bob. Same question.
As I mentioned in my opening statement, I have a lot of experience in town, either working or volunteering. So I know what a lot of people are talking about and what the needs are of the community, both from Rotary and People Helping People, my work as the Veterans Agent, the Board of Health, and the Board of Selectmen. I think being knee-deep in what's going on around town helps me know what those people who are asking us for things need, or even if they don't ask, we can kind of anticipate the needs of the community. So I think primarily my service work on all of those areas is important, and I've had the great joy of getting to know so many people, especially as the Veterans Agent, and knowing the people in the Veterans community has been very important and very rewarding to me. So I think those are the things that I draw from.
Thank you. And Nick?
So I would say that my day job helps twofold. First, you know, one of the biggest concerns, I think a lot of folks I've heard from here in town have, is that they don't know what's going on. They feel disconnected. You know, there's a big concern around communication, which in the 21st century, given all of the, you know, ways that we can communicate, it shouldn't have to be that way. And so, you know, when it comes to community outreach and community engagement, you know, I'm very well-versed when it comes to strategic planning and development, when it comes to, you know, crafting messaging and finding ways to get that message out to people and creating that two-way dialogue, right? I think that, you know, it's very easy to turn off and say that, well, because, you know, people aren't talking to us, that, you know, we'll do what we can, but, you know, they really have to take that step forward. I think that there needs to be that, you know, that push. You know, one of the terms we use a lot in my field is inbound marketing, right? You put things out there to people, find, and they come to it. But, you know, it's about market research, it's about committee development, and it's about implementation and adjustment, right? You have to put yourself out there and really get a hold of your audience, right? The people of Burlington in this case. And then you have to use what you found to bring that in. The second part is with all of this adjustment toward wanting to burden our bio readiness and bring life sciences into our community, a large part of what I do is working with biotech and life science companies, knowing how they operate, knowing what they need, and being able to be well-versed in that space.
For the next question, we return to Rich Hosford of B News, and as a heads up, Nick, you will be the first to answer the question. Rich?
Thank you, Alan. Do you think there are any types of services the town needs to expand on and perhaps any that it needs to sort of pare back away from?
It's a very broad question.
It is.
Services, well, so Burlington, we offer a wide variety of services, which is what always pains me when I hear people say that they don't know what's going on in town, because we do, we offer a lot of stuff. And not just in programs, but in actual services, right? We have trash pickup that, you know, isn't charged for. We have, you know, athletics and after-school activities that, you know, people don't pay extra fees for. You know, I think that we do, we do a lot, a great deal of things. I wouldn't say that we need to pare back on anything, you know, and I think that, you know, what we need to be doing is looking into the future and saying, okay, you know, these programs and services that we have and offering, what is their next step revolution if there is one? Do we need to be adjusting, making adjustments now for the future and having, you know, a plan ready in place to do that? You know, there's no one particular thing that comes to mind. I think it's just the ever-present, you know, knowing of where all your pieces are and what might be coming down the road to make adjustments for that.
Okay. Thank you. Same question, Christopher Hartling.
I, like Nick, I am not of the opinion that we should be looking to pare back any of the services. To highlight one of the services that maybe a lot of people don't know about that we offer, that I am particularly excited about, is our Recreation Department, which has a decades-long reputation of being a leader in this field. I think there are people that moved to Burlington because of our Recreation Department and stay here and brag about it because of that department. We currently have a rehabilitative recreation program where, through different activities such as horseback riding and things of that nature, we are actually able to provide opportunities for children and adults with disabilities to get out into the fresh air and do things that they may not otherwise be able to do. So as far as a service and something that's new and exciting, that to me would be something that I think we should be bragging about. Another service that we may want to look into increasing, I think what we hear a lot of now is, going back to your restaurant question, a lot of those restaurants and a lot of the service industries in Burlington have issues with staffing. So a challenge that we have in front of us is, how do we get labor into these establishments when labor doesn't always have the ability to get there themselves? Those would be a couple of references to service that I would make.
Thank you. And the same question, Bob Hogan.
Thank you. We don't make anything. We don't sell anything. So everything we do is a service of one kind or another, even those services that people aren't crazy about, like collecting your taxes and paying those kinds of bills. But the town has some great employees and great services that we are all aware of, including recreation, the programs at the high school, the bus transportation. I don't think there's any reason to consider cutting back on anything. We've got a good tax base to help pay for all the services. If that tax base isn't there or isn't there well enough, that's when we'd have to take a look at cutting back or charging for services. But we're nowhere near that. That's nothing that's going to come up in any conversation anytime soon. So we provide a lot of good services to everybody, and if there's something that you're looking for and you don't know about it, you don't see it in a catalog or a newspaper, call the Town Hall and ask somebody, you know, is this service available and how do I get access to it? So, yeah, we're not anywhere near cutting anything. If there are additional services that we should be looking at, certainly we'd all be glad to hear your ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next question comes from Joy Hosford of Wicked Local, and Bob will be the first to answer.
So there are many benefits to Burlington, as you guys have discussed in the last few minutes, but I think one of the things that people who live here every day may have concern with is that the town caters more to the business side of things and maybe less to the residents. As Nick mentioned, going out can be expensive, especially with a large family. How do you guys work to support the people who live here? How have you done that, and how do you plan to do that in the future?
Well, I would, I would not agree that we cater more to the business community. I think we cater appropriately to them, but I think the residents still get the first shot at whatever it is that we're talking about. I think there are times when it appears that a particular issue, like traffic, is going to come up, and not all of the traffic in town is because of the business community in town. A lot of the traffic is people going from one community to another, passing through. And I think, too, we also have to accept responsibility. When I moved here 40-something years ago, there may have been one car in every driveway. Now there's two, three, and four cars in every driveway. So in some ways, we are also our own worst enemy. So on that particular issue, we just have to look at things realistically. So no, I don't think we cater more to the business community, but there are appropriate times to take a look at the business community and find out how we can work together.
Thank you.
Next question, same question, excuse me, Nick Priest.
Thank you. I agree with Bob, you know, in the sense that we aren't over catering to the business community. You know, they pay a large portion of the taxes here in town, and so we cater to them with a proportionate amount of white clothing that needs to be done, and then the rest of the white clothing goes to the residents. Not to say that the residents get second pick, they do. They get first, you know, kind of stabbed at a lot of things. I think, you know, what we need to be doing is looking at the community as holistically as possible, right? We are 24,000, 25,000 residents, and then we boom to a 200,000-person population during the day, to the influx, and with that comes, you know, this, like Bob said, you know, we have concerns around traffic now. We have concerns around, you know, walking down sidewalks. Is the sidewalk repaired? Can I do, you know, and all of these concerns, I think, hit the residents first because those are the kinds of things that the residents experience more so than the businesses, because the businesses are all generally located in one area, and it's a come-and-go, and, you know, people are moving through that area very rapidly. I think what we need to be doing is looking, you know, there's been talk of an Economic Development Director. I think that that role moving forward would look to, you know, curate the types of businesses we have here in town and work with the Selectmen and the Town Administrator to create a balance around the entire, you know, economy so that, you know, everyone feels well-served.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, the same question, Chris.
Sure. Thank you. I think the word that Nick just used is a key word. I think balance, balance in anything is important. I sort of bristle at the notion that we, as a government, whether it's Town Meeting or Ways and Means or the Board of Selectmen or the Planning Board or the Board of Health or the Board of Recreation, I don't really get the sense that any of us who serve in any capacity of the government tend to have the needs of one group placed on a higher pedestal than the other. As Nick mentioned, we spend, we get 60%, better than 60% of our tax revenue from the quote-unquote "business sector." I don't think they own much more than 35, 36% of the property, total property in town. We spend 50% of our budget on schools every year. I don't know that you can really fairly identify a specific area that anybody in government pays particular attention to, and truthfully, I think the needs of one group generally go hand-in-hand with the other. We get our services as residents for $0.40 on the dollar, if you really want to look at it that way. So technically, what's good for the business keeps new business wanting to locate here, keeps existing business wanting to stay here, which in turn helps to pay the taxes that are needed to run the town. So I don't know that anybody pays particular attention to one group, and I also don't feel like the needs of one are necessarily drastically different than the needs of the other.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll go back to Rich for our next question.
What are some projects or, you know, areas of focus that you think the town should address in the next five to 10 years? This could be capital projects or things like sidewalks, or what do you think are the priorities of the town as far as spending money?
And we'll start with Rich. Excuse me, Chris.
So I know that, you know, we have a capital plan in place. A lot of that, a lot of what we are planning to do is already laid out and has been laid out for a long time. I do know that you're going to see, you're going to start to hear about some plans with regards to schools. Like Bob mentioned earlier, we're in the process of a couple of different municipal buildings. We're almost done with the fire station. MWRA, water is like a, Nick mentioned, communication earlier, and the best way to communicate, I think, is good old face-to-face, and most of the communication that I've had over the past year or two has been at a supermarket, most specifically about water. And as Bob alluded to earlier, we're undertaking a huge project that Town Meeting has approved, and we're going to have sort of a two-tiered approach to providing water. We've got our own ability to do that, and we're going to be joining MWRA. So what we need to spend on, I think we've mapped out a pretty good plan to do. I personally would love to see some spending allocated towards, some members of the Conservation Commission have talked about, some sort of a walking path or a bike path. So what we are spending money on is kind of laid out. What I think we should spend money on is, at this point, fortunately, luxury-type stuff.
Thank you. Same question, Nick?
Yeah. So having been on Ways and Means and Town Meeting, you know, you start hearing all of, you know, what's kind of going on around town, and, you know, a couple of the areas, I think, that we should be focusing on. Number one, to Chris's point, the schools. You know, the, I have the privilege of serving on the Ways and Means Subcommittee for Schools, and talk about insight into what the schools are doing. You know, the enrollment rate for elementary schools is projected to increase, I believe, somewhere in the realm of 10% over the next 10 years or something like that, if I recall my facts correctly. You know, and we look at, you know, buildings like Pine Glen and Box Hill as buildings that were built, you know, in 1962, 1963, and that ballpark that, you know, they've received all the tender loving care I think that they can. We've, you know, used every last tax dollar that went into those buildings, and the question now becomes is, you know, how do we prepare for the next generation of our little ones? So that's obviously huge. I think another piece is, you know, looking at, as we mentioned earlier tonight, the downtown area, right, as we want to call it, as our master plan document calls it, the common, the hills, and the center, right? You know, what's going to happen in this area? And then lastly, you know, we talk about development and what's coming down the pike, you know, but what about preservation, right? Let's talk about, like, the Landlock Forest. How can we start to, you know, get people into that space? It's 250-plus acres of land. How can we start using a little bit more?
Okay. Thank you. All right. I think we have time for one more question, and we'll go to, back to Joy. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I forget? I did. Bob, I'm sorry.
You're forgiven.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yes. To Chris's point, a lot of the projects have, the capital projects have been identified, but I don't think we should just say, well, we voted on that, we don't have to worry about it. I think the follow-through is also quite important. The MWRA is a long-term project that's going to take some time, and we're going to have to keep tabs of it. It's a $5.3, $5.4 million project to take care of a need that one day will occur, and we need to have been thinking well in advance of it so that one day we don't get a call saying, oh, I don't have any water. What are you going to do about it? We've had an awful lot of meetings. The Board of Selectmen came to the realization what we thought we needed to do, which is hook up to the MWRA. There was a Town Meeting Water Study Committee who got the same information that we did and came to the same conclusion, as did Town Meeting. So it's nice to know that when you get the right information, you can plan ahead as a town for something like this. A smaller, less important or vital issue has to do with the sidewalks and the repairing of sidewalks, and we came up with a plan, and I was proud to discuss it and bring it up and motion it into a vote. Had to do with, instead of having the same conversation every year about funding for the repair of the sidewalks, why don't we just do a three-year plan, put a million dollars away, and then let DPW decide which sidewalks they're going to repair without having to come back and have public hearings on the subject? And in three years, we can do it at that point, but to have those discussions every year, I think, is counterproductive. So those are the kind of things I look at also.
Thank you. Okay. For the final question in this segment, we go back to Joy Hosford of Wicked Local, and Nick will get the first response.
Are you for or against the ballot question challenging the treasurer or tax collector position elected to be appointed, and why?
I knew this question was coming. How could it not? How could a ballot question not be asked during a forum? So right now, I stay on the side of for, the move to appointment. I do not like the idea of, you know, removing checks and balances from anything when it comes to government. You know, there's a lot to be said for how democracy is meant to operate. You know, there's a lot to be said for how democracy is meant to operate, and the value of our right to vote. But that being said, you know, it's hard for me to put $150 million in the line, and the investment of, you know, our funds, and the collection of all of, you know, the, the taxes and everything else that, you know, Brian Curtin, our current treasurer collector, does, it's, it's very difficult. So, so, I mean, you know, the, the folks on No are making a very persuasive democratic argument, you know, but as, as we grow as a community financially, and, you know, I, I, I just wonder that, you know, we have to be careful with, with our funds.
Okay, and now to Bob Hogan.
Thank you. As many of you may be aware of, I started the ball rolling on this issue last summer when Brian announced he was going to retire. I thought this would be the best time to move this discussion forward again, for the very reason that Nick mentioned. $150 million is an awful lot of money to put into the hands of someone who may not be the most qualified individual. There are 284 communities, 24 in the last five years, who have changed over to an appointed position. So a lot of communities around the state have moved in that direction and continue to do so. Arlington being the most recent this past year, they voted overwhelmingly to move to an appointed treasurer-collector position. I, I think there's an awful lot of good arguments to be had about making sure that we have the most qualified person taking care of all of our money, 150 million coming in, 150 million going out again every year, either investments or paying bills, all kinds of things. We've been fortunate for the last 42 years to have Brian in that seat, but he's retiring. He's on the ballot, and he's going to stay a little while longer until we get this settled and worked out. So the next person, whoever that is, needs to be appointed, I believe, and I think it gives us the best opportunity to hire the most qualified. And we've hired a lot of great qualified people, Town Administrator, Town Accountant, Police Chief, Fire Chief, DPW head, there's an awful lot of very qualified people that have been hired, and so I support yes to appoint the treasurer-collector.
Thank you. And on the question of the Town Treasurer, Chris Hartling.
Thanks, Alan. So Joy, I'm reluctantly, I'm reluctantly voting for the shift to an appointment. I say reluctantly, and I should back up, if we were talking about a situation where this was 20 years ago, and Mr. Curtin was 20 years younger than he is now, I wouldn't even entertain the possibility of having this be an appointed position, just because I think he's that good at it. I've spoken to him at length about it, he is very strongly opposed to making this an appointed position. The business side of me agrees with the idea that we want to have somebody who's professionally trained in this field. The people's side of me causes me to have some pause, because I think a tax collector, it's not that simple, it's not you sit behind a desk and you operate a desktop and you make decisions based on money. Brian's had to make a lot of decisions over the years that are more people, people-related decisions, because the role of the tax collector is to collect the taxes. There are times when that person has to be willing to work with citizens and be compassionate, so my reluctance to be for it is centered on the idea that I want to make sure we get somebody that has both sides of the aisle covered.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to move on to the next segment, where each of you get to ask the other two candidates a question. Again, you'll have 90 seconds to answer. For this segment, we will begin the questioning with Bob.
I suppose the, the question that both can answer, because obviously, there's, there's a sitting member and a non-sitting member, would have to do with the, as Nick would talk about, is, is the communications going on between the town and the citizens as good as it can be, or how can it be better?
Okay, we'll start with Chris.
So I think, truthfully, Bob, I think communication, Nick, you know, Nick made some good points about communication earlier. I do not have, I am not currently on the book face, I don't have ChatSnap, I don't Tweet or Twitter or whatever it is. I'm not computer illiterate, but I do understand that there is, there's a huge importance on being able to communicate to people in their means of communication. By that, I mean, if people, if their preferred way of getting information and sharing information is via, you know, a mobile device, or an iPad, or a desktop, then so be it. I'm also a huge believer that the best way to communicate with somebody is by using your voice, and your face, and your eyes, and looking somebody in the eye. So I guess what I would say to your question, Bob, is I'm about communicating to somebody in their preferred means of communicating, but I think we're losing the ability to have good old-fashioned communication, face-to-face, voice-to-voice, and I don't think we should ever lose sight of having the ability to do that.
Thank you. And Nick, Bob's questions?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question, and I agree with Chris, you know, face-to-face is, is and always will be one of the best forms, you know, we are social creatures, and, you know, we pick up on a lot when we're in front of each other, right? You know, our body language tells us more in, you know, seconds than, you know, our words can in minutes, so we should never lose that. When it comes to, you know, communication, though, the way with which we receive information now is through so many different mediums, right? How can we reach everybody, right? And what are those people looking to, you know, garner? What's, what's everyone's thing, right? You know, one person is there because they're a senior and they want to use a council on aging. Another person's there because they need information on the elementary schools, because they have little kids going into the, into the school system. You know, our audience is wildly diverse, and we need to be able to cater to that. We need to be able to find ways to do more outreach, you know, whether that be face-to-face or, you know, inbound marketing, where we put, put things out there and, and use that to bring people to us. You know, we just need to up our game, and that is just a, a product of how society has changed, not anything that, in my opinion, local government has done to falter.
Okay, thank you very much. Next question, Chris.
So Alan, my question is, I think Joy and Rich have done a very good job of asking nonspecific, neutral questions, so I'm going to ask personal questions, not too personal, but personal. So I'll start with you, Nick. I see you around town at events, I see you with your wife and your young children, I'm a little envious at the age of your children versus the age of mine, but that's a conversation for another time. So the question I would have for you is, what is it that you and your family do as an activity, or what is it that you seek as a service that you have to go outside of town to do?
That's a great question. So first off, don't be too envious of me, we're going through Pi training with one of the kids right now, and there's nothing envious about that, as I think we can all attest.
Yeah.
I would say, you know, one thing that we go outside of town for, that's interesting, we, we try to stay in town as much as humanly possible. Funny enough, the biggest thing we go out of town for is when I'm trying to be a handyman, and I emphasize the word "trying" there. You know, we don't have a robust hardware store in town, and so I find myself either driving to Billerica to go to O'Connor, or, you know, go to Wilmington, go to Ace, or, I mean, you know, wherever there's, I mean, it seems like every town around us has a hardware store, and I would, I would kill, you know, figuratively, obviously, to have a hardware store in the, in the center of town.
Great recovery, Nick. You go to O'Connor's because of the popcorn, which is the same way I go.
Right, absolutely.
So, yeah, let's, let's not pull any punches. So Bob, your personal question is, you mentioned earlier, and a lot of us are aware of that, the fact that you've got in excess of 30 years of service to the town, you've been here a long time, you've done a lot, you've seen a lot, you've participated in a lot, so I guess what I'd like to know from you, maybe I'll ask you two, you pick one or you answer both, the thing you're most proud of, and maybe the thing you might want to do over on, if either one of those two things comes to mind?
I'll, I'll go with the thing I'm most proud of, and it has to do with the 9/11 memorial that's on the Town Common. I had started making some phone calls to the archivist for the New York Port Authority, and I knew that the time was running out in order to get anything from the archives, and after talking with Amy Pasaic, she agreed to release two items to us, they were both rails from the, the trains that ran beneath the, the Trade Center buildings in New York, and were recovered after the events of 2001, 9/11, 2001. And we brought those items to Burlington with the help of Deputy Fire Chief Mike Patterson and firefighter Ed McLean. We traveled to New York, we bundled the items up, and we drove them back here, and with the help of a lot of people, eventually, we're able to put them on the Town Common. They've been embedded into cement, we now have a marker there, and when the weather approves this year, we're also going to do some more landscaping around that, so that particular item, which is not specific to the Board of Selectmen, is, is something I'm very, very proud of.
Good call. Great, okay, Nick, your question to the other candidates.
Yeah, so one thing that we haven't talked about tonight are the seniors, and I know that we are doing a lot for them. We, you know, just reopened the 61 Center Street, with that, was it $3 million we put into the?
It might have been more than that, but that's a decent number to work with.
And, you know, I know at, at a meeting a couple weeks ago, the Board of Selectmen just approved another 55-plus community with some affordable housing units, which is great, but I would ask, you know, what, what else? I read in the paper today that every day between now and the year 2013, 10,000 baby boomers are going to reach retirement age. How do we even begin to accommodate for that?
Yeah, we'll start, let's see, with Chris.
So, Nick, I, I think to me, I think the first thing that I look at when you ask about seniors is, I think the best way to approach that is to look at the people around you and talk to the people around you. So for me, when you ask about seniors, I'm thinking about my mother-in-law, who has a home in town, I'm thinking about my mom, who no longer lives in town, but is a senior, I'm thinking about Mrs. Boselli across the street. I think the best thing, or the most important thing that we can do is give the elderly the opportunity to stay in town, whether that means move into some alternative form of living, as you mentioned, or whether it means giving them the maximum ability to stay in their own homes, with the services that we offer, with different, with different programs that we have, some of which are operated by the town. We should be supportive of other types of services, such as Meals on Wheels, which is not a town program, but it's something that we have here in town, and when we have opportunities to support initiatives like that, or whether we, when we have opportunities to continue to pick up the trash, continue to move people around town, continue to present options to folks as to where they can go, if they decide or are no longer able to be in their own homes. I think giving them choices and options, and enabling them to stay, that's really the most important thing we can do.
Yeah, I completely agree.
Yeah.
And Bob, we'll let you wrap up this segment.
Thank you. As a person who kind of moved into that senior population several years ago, I, I think we need to continue having the conversation with people, not only the seniors themselves, but the people like Marge and her staff at the COA, to find out what the needs continue to be. We had a lot of conversations about the renovation of the building, 61 Center Street, as to what we needed to put in there, or how we needed to reconfigure it so that we could use it better for the senior population. You know, I, I know that some of the seniors who go to Bingo would like to have more Bingo winners every week, so that's one of those things maybe we can talk to Mike Runyon about when he's calling the numbers. But it, it's important, housing, staying in town, being able to afford what you've got, is important, and there's, there's always going to be plenty of conversation around what we can and should do, and we're always listening to some ideas, and, you know, those that work and, and are, and are possible, we certainly take seriously.
Well, that brings us to closing statements. For this segment, you each get two minutes, and by lottery, we will begin with Bob Hogan.
Thank you. Thanks for BCAT, thanks for, the question is, I, again, am asking for one of your two votes for the election that's coming up on Saturday, April 6th, for the Board of Selectmen. There, there is so much to talk about, we only scratched the surface here tonight, and I believe that I've done a, a decent, respectful job for the citizens of this town, and I enjoy giving back to the town and being aware of, of the needs of the town, so. I'm not going to take the whole two minutes, but I just, I just want to remind you that at every step of the way, or whatever the, the particular task that I'm doing, I'm thinking of the citizens and the residents of this community first and foremost, so thank you.
Okay, Christopher Hartling.
Thank you, Alan, and as Bob mentioned, good, good job this evening, and my thanks to BCAT for putting this together and giving the three of us an opportunity to reach out to folks and let them know what we're about. I think if you have watched this and paid attention to this conversation this evening, and that's really what it is, it's a conversation, I think what you're hearing is, I have no doubt you're hearing from three people that care a lot about their community, care a lot about their environment, care a lot about the people who live here. I'm asking that you give me an opportunity to serve on the Board of Selectmen for at least three more years. I, I'm the current chairman, the time that I've had on the board has been educational, it's also been an opportunity for me to give a lot back to a community and a group of people that have given a lot to me. I've gone to school here, I played sports here, I've participated in different school events here, and I've evolved into this person who I now get the opportunity to coach kids in the same community, so I'm seeing, as an adult, many of the things I got to experience as a kid, and now, as an adult, I'm seeing the opportunity to continue to care for people in the generation that Nick asked about earlier, my parents' generation. So I hope what you've heard from me is that I do have a perspective that is a great tool in enabling me to make good decisions that are good for everybody, so I am formally asking for one of your two votes for Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final word, Nick Priest.
So I'll say, it would be my absolute privilege to serve the town of Burlington as your next election. Burlington has seen a tremendous amount of success over the last 20-plus years, for a myriad of reasons, not the least of which has been due to the efforts of, of our Board of Selectmen. The next 20 years bring a whole slew of new challenges, challenges that we need to begin researching, understanding, and preparing for now. We all know about the best-laid plans, but we have to become comfortable with the idea of adapting and evolving to fit the needs of our community. We understand value in this town, but we also hold very true to our values, it's in part what makes us who we are. My goal is to provide proactive leadership, a new perspective, innovative, strategic-driven thinking, and a relentless effort to strive for a common sense approach to what comes next. We may not, and dare I say oftentimes, will not agree on many things. It's one of the, the beautiful things about people coming together, the sharing, debating, and melding of ideas toward common goals. Government isn't always efficient, and it really shouldn't be, it should be effective above all else, striving to always meet and sometimes exceed the needs of the many. I will help manage the office of the Selectmen and all of its duties and responsibilities, as well as lead our community forward through active listening, effective communication, strategic planning, and community engagement. I want to thank Alan, Rich, Joy, BCAT for coordinating and conducting the forum tonight, my family for their never-ending support, and to you, the people of Burlington, for all of your incredible support and for everything that you all do every day. Remember, your vote matters. If you haven't yet, if I haven't yet, I hope to earn one of your two votes on April 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, believe it or not, we've reached the end. In closing, I'd like to thank all three of the candidates, Christopher Hartling, Robert Hogan, and Nick Priest, not only for sharing your vision here at this forum, but also for... only for sharing your vision here at this forum, but also for offering your time and service to the, the people of the town. Thank you, Joy Hosford of Wicked Local and Rich Hosford of B News. And finally, thank you, thank you to Jen Dodge and the rest of the staff and the volunteers here at BCAT. Remember, Election Day is Saturday, April 6th. The polls are open at the high school from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Here's your chance to have a direct say on how your town government operates. Make sure you take advantage of that right and responsibility. Thank you for watching.